Yep, I know. Thank you. Appreciate it, Larry. Okay, welcome, everybody. We are going to begin, we have three public hearings. First one is ordinance O-24-10, an ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach to amend the language of the election code to quantify how the town validates petitions for referent. Anybody have any comment on this particular ordinance? Hearing none. Number two, ordinance on O-24-11, an ordinance to Town Council of Chesapeake Beach to amend the language of the election code to clarify how the Board of Elections will offer assistance to voters with disabilities. Any public comment on that? And lastly, ordinance O-24-12, an ordinance to the Town Council of Chesapeake Beach to add language to the election code to establish campaign finance regulations. Is there any comment on that? We'll go in order. Whoever wants to, let's go ladies first. Name and address, please.
Thank you. I am here, Kristin DePhilippe. I live in Huntington, but I am the property manager for 8501 Bayside Road, also known as Horizons on the Bay. I'm here to specifically talk about Section B, Item 1 of this particular ordinance, which states candidates will only accept contributions from Town of Chesapeake Beach registered individual voters. And I'll just start off with a little bit of definition facts. Town Code Section C601 defines what a voter is. That would be a person who is a U.S. citizen, they're at least 18 years of age, they are a resident of the town, and they are registered in accordance with the provisions of the town charter. Now, in 2020, when the town released their comprehensive plan, it stated that 23% of households within the town were occupied by renters. That was 2010 data. So I actually went onto the Census Bureau, got a little bit more up-to-date data. And according to the last census in 2020, that number did remain relatively the same at 22%. Given the amount of households within side of the town, this means that there are roughly about 570 households within the town limits that are rental homes. One could assume, even when being conservative, that with real estate taxes on those rental homes, the $2.7 million that the 2024 general budget collects for real estate tax, that that 22% is going to be about a half a million dollars, give or take, depending on the state assessments. And it's these homeowners that I'm here to speak for, not just the landlords that are at Horizons on the Bay, but the landlords that are in the town. They already don't have the opportunity to participate in the election because the votes go to their renters. But by passing this section, Item 1 of the ordinance, you're also removing their opportunity to try and have somebody to sit at those seats and represent them. I'm hoping that the council understands that the impression that's being given to these owners who do contribute to the town economy and who provide their tenants with an opportunity to reside inside of the town that they might not otherwise afford, that they don't matter, that their voice doesn't count. I ask that you consider removing this line from the ordinance or amending before you vote. And that's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Next.
Hi there.
Hello, hello. Great to see you.
Teresa Melson. I live right over Windward Key. First of all, I want to tell you that I'm going to address this. The flowers arrangements in Chesapeake Beach this year look fabulous. So thank you for that. They are absolutely beautiful.
That's the staff. They're wonderful.
Okay, now with that, I do, I want to speak, obviously, to the $500 limit as well. I have the same concerns that were just addressed. If you are an absentee landlord or an absentee owner, you've got a second house, which over at Windward Key, we do have quite a few second homeowners. You're not giving them the opportunity to participate in the governance of this town. I have a concern about that. But my real concern is that it looks like this is not in keeping with the election campaign finance, Chapter 8.1, that does say that a contribution is a gift or transfer of money. Contribution can be made by any individual, a business entity, a political club, federal committee, or labor union. So if you are saying somebody that is an individual cannot participate in trying to vet a campaign person or something like that, I think that's wrong. And I wonder if you have taken a look at that and how this provision, if you decide to approve it, how that's going to run afoul of Chapter 8.1. I got this off of the Calvert County Board of Elections. And again, and I'm happy to give it to you, I'm sure you have it, but...
Thank you.
It also says, and I didn't see anything in this, that the limit is $6,000. Do you, and I didn't see anywhere in here where it said that you had the opportunity to lower that amount, that a contribution for an individual cannot exceed $6,000. So both of those are questions. I would hate to run afoul of federal election law and then have to defend it.
Thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Sir?
Evening, Mayor. Evening, Council. I'm Bruce Wall, former mayor, former councilman, and current candidate for mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on ordinance O-24-12 regarding campaign finance reporting. As you know, I was the first person to file to run for mayor in the upcoming November 5th town election. At the time of that filing, which I made on April 30th of 2024, there were no town regulations regarding campaign finance disclosure. At the June 14th council meeting, ordinance O-24-12 was introduced and will be voted upon at the council meeting following this hearing. While I am in favor of the disclosure of the sources of campaign funding, I am opposed to Paragraph B, titled Contribution Limitations, Subparagraphs 1 and 2, and please allow me to explain why. Subparagraph 1 states, "Candidates will only accept contributions from the Town of Chesapeake Beach registered individual voters. The Election Board may provide each candidate with a list of town-registered voters." One concern with this provision is that it may well violate Amendment 1 of the United States Constitution, the Bill of Rights adopted in December 15, 1791, that it reads, "Congress shall make no law respecting and establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof, or abridging the freedom of speech or of the press, or the right of people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for redress of grievances." I offer a personal example of this proposed restriction as to who may be contributed to the campaign of a candidate for a municipal elected position. My brother, my two sons, and my two stepdaughters do not live within the corporate limits of Chesapeake Beach, but they are all supportive of my efforts to run for mayor. Again, if this ordinance is adopted as presented, my children, my brother, they will not be able to support me with any campaign funding. Another issue with this proposed limitation is that individuals that have personal interest in the election may not be registered voters in the municipality. A good example here is that my son-in-law's brother and his family live on Fifth Street in Randall Cliff. They live about 200 feet from the town limit, and they live very close to Brownies Beach. They would not be able, excuse me, to support my campaign, although they have a keen interest in the outcome of the election because what happens here in the municipality affects the people that live in Randall Cliff, just south of the town limits. And we're close friends and relatives. They want to help. I have a great nephew that recently purchased a house on Second Street in Randall Cliff. His mother and my niece and his father live in Owings. This provision, if adopted, will prevent these family members and others that would like to contribute to the campaign from doing so. So please carefully consider removing this restriction from the introduced ordinance. Another significant concern about Subparagraph 1 is that there are many owners of property in Chesapeake Beach that are registered to vote elsewhere. Two examples I can share from my subdivision, Chesapeake Station, are that my next-door neighbors are registered to vote in Montgomery County, which is where their principal residences are. Also, the Chesapeake Station HOA Vice President has her permanent residence near Glen Echo, Maryland. But she and her husband own a bayfront home in Chesapeake Station. They are keenly interested in the governance of Chesapeake Beach, but would not be able to support the candidate or candidates of their choice should Subparagraph 1 be adopted. Subparagraph 2 states, "Candidates will not accept total contributions in excess of $500 from any single person." As was pointed out earlier, that's very low compared to other campaign finance limitations. With the cost of signs, printing, postage, and other campaign materials skyrocketing, the cost to effectively run a campaign has grown exponentially. The Maryland Board of Elections currently limits individual funding to $6,000 per campaign per donor. And I gather from what Kristin just said, Calvert County uses the same limit. The introduced ordinance limits, the ordinance that's been introduced limits donors to only $500 or 8.33% of what is allowed in the state and county elections. It's a very small percentage. As an example, a recent quotation for mailings that I obtained puts the total cost of mailing postcards to all registered voters in Chesapeake Beach at $4,750 and letters to every registered voter is at $6,150, given the ever-rising cost of postage, which we all know about, the printing and the campaign signs and the like. It is respectfully requested that a higher per donor amount be allowed. Board of Election Supervisor Randy Gutman shared with me that he drafted this proposed ordinance as a result of reviewing Town Code in advance of the November 5th election. I respect and admire Mr. Gutman's dedication and devotion to the town and his willingness to continue serving in this important role. Randy, don't let that go to your head. But at any rate, however, since there are already other candidates for the position of mayor and campaigns are already underway, it would seem prudent to defer consideration of any changes to Section 22-28-2 until after the current election cycle is passed. Making changes in the midst of a campaign cycle would be disruptive and could be misconstrued. Deferring updates until after the upcoming election would eliminate any doubt about the motivation for change. Thank you for considering this request to defer or amend this ordinance.
Thank you. That it? If so, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it. Ladies and gentlemen, we will now begin the July 18th Town Council meeting. At the record read that the entire council, to include the mayor, is present. At this time, we all have the honor to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Ask the council for a motion to approve the agenda?
Moves to approve.
Second.
Aye.
Any ayes have it. At this time, is there any public comment on any item on the agenda? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Laura Blackwelder, 3256 Cannon K. Court, Chesapeake Beach. My comments relate to Item 6A of the Agenda Town Administrator's Report. The future of the water park and the water recreation in Chesapeake Beach will be a key topic in the coming election. The quick facts about the water park indicate that Step 3, finalized designs, Step 4, to construct park based on feasibility, and Step 5, RFP awarded, will all occur this fall. However, funding needed for a replacement water amenity has not been allocated by motion and vote by the elected body. Additionally, the mayor and town administrator presented the town council with an option to create a special revenue fund for water recreation in the fall of 2023. I do not believe that this was passed by motion and vote. For those of you who will be asking residents of this town to cast their vote in your favor this coming election, will you comment on why funds for the amenity itself weren't allocated yet and whether or not you intend to support the creation of a special revenue fund for a local water recreation amenity, and when should this be done? Additionally, what amount of funding are you willing to dedicate towards a refurbished or replacement for our water park? Will you commit to funding a local water recreation amenity regardless of whether any of the support pilings would need to be reset? In short, how committed are you to ensuring that local water recreation is not lost in Chesapeake Beach? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. And any other comments on any item on the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to, is there a motion to approve the minutes of the June 20th Town Council meeting?
Moves to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Town Council report, is there anything in particular that sticks out that you want to mention?
Yes, we have a couple items. The Board of Port Wardens will actually hold their first meeting in quite some time as a newly appointed group of members, as appointed by Town Council on July 23rd to review an application for the United States Navy. Yes, that's correct. Kayaks and paddle boards have been ordered, and those are for town resident use. They will be positioned at Bayfront Park and our town-owned public ramps. So we'll have further information on that. Town staff continues to work with DNR on a soft launch. This is through grant funds to have a soft launch located at the public ramps. So more information will be forthcoming. The approvals for the Kellums Field improvements have been obtained, and we do expect to install the storm drain in the month of August. The grading will be completed, are expected to be completed, for the playground area in September. And we have ordered all of the new playground equipment as approved by Town Council, and that is also expected to be in place in the fall, around September timeframe. We have a lot of really great expanded activities at Kellums right now, using our seasonal staff. So please come by and take a look, from tie-dye to tumbling activities for children, nature walk, and community yoga on Fridays. Please stop by and see all of the great activities that are occurring.
That's just wonderful. Anybody have any questions to the Town Administrator? I'll begin with, I'll begin with you, madam.
Thank you. Yeah, I got a couple of questions. With respect to the street art, have we been able to check if there's any grants out there? I know for a while we were seeing grants all the time. So are there any?
I have been reviewing a few. However, I am not finding a perfect match for our project, but I am still looking, and I will bring that back to council.
Fantastic. Thank you. Under the holiday lighting, electrical work, are the connections new every year or are these new connections?
They, so they're running to establish connections, but those lines, those temporary lines are new every year, correct?
All right, very good. Thank you. One more question here. Oh, I'm just going to say, from the public works side of it, excellent news that with the flushing, there were no known, you had any solid failures.
That was when I put the report in, but there was one yesterday. So knock on wood.
It wasn't due to flushing, right? Was it? Oh, okay. Never mind. And for the water treatment plant, just welcome to Carlos in his new role. And a question for the water treatment plant, Josh or Holly? The, so BG&E said there's three possible reasons to have the power surges that the SCADA noticed. Are they going to explore that further to decide what it is?
Right now, they have a data logger on the lines coming into the plant just prior to the meter. Right now, we haven't had any issues since those occurrences in June. In fact, BG&E reached out to me yesterday to see if I had seen anything with any of the storms or anything like that. Initially, they thought it might be the capacitor that's out at the pole coming into the plant. Basically, all that does is if it detects there's a drop in voltage, it discharges and increases the voltage back up to where it should be. They were wondering whether that could be malfunctioning and would be causing what we were seeing. Another thing that was going on during that time, we had a lot of high wind during event when it wasn't rain. And they were thinking maybe it was just the intermittent tree branch that was causing a short on one of the lines. Until we started seeing more instances of it, we're still kind of in the dark exactly what the cause was.
Is it new that the SCADA notices this, or it's just recent that?
It just...
First time we've seen it come up.
We've had them intermittently, but they were usually associated with storm events. And you have a storm, you have a power flicker, you're like, okay, it's probably just a tree branch or something along that line. When we were having them on clear sky days, that's when it gets a little bit of questioning, is there a problem with equipment on the power line or something along that line?
Great. Thank you. That's all I have. Thanks.
Keith?
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you. I have no additional questions, but I did want to extend my welcome to Mr. Barrigan as well. Thank you.
Yeah, one of my questions was answered. Thanks, Peggy, for that inquiry. Really, the one thing I just wanted to ask of the Town Administrator, if we could kind of get in a nutshell, especially the folks that are listening here, where are we today with the route, with the connector, Chesapeake Village?
Yes, the Safe Routes to School. So we received an RFP, our sealed proposals. Unfortunately, we only received one proposal. We had at least eight firms at our pre-bid meeting. It was not a mandatory pre-bid meeting, however, we only received one proposal. We provided that to the state. I did hear from the state this week that they are concerned that we only received one proposal. And so they are reviewing if we will have to resubmit that out for bid again. So I'm waiting to hear back on the status of that. However, we are evaluating the proposal. We actually received it from the same firm that completed the 30% design on the project. So we are still reviewing that with our town engineer to provide proper scoring, and ultimately, we'll bring that back to Town Council once we receive approval from the state.
And thus, with the intent and the aim, the continuing our aim at having that route run along 261, right? Thank you.
Sure. Thank you. On the ongoing walkability projects, first, I wanted to give a big shout-out. Congratulations, thanks to everyone involved in these projects. When implemented, these projects will have a tremendous positive impact on walkability in our community. So thank you for that. Terms of specific questions? The Bayside Boardwalk and Overlook, aka Dewar's Memorial Walkway, says the SRTS project took priority of this project, therefore is not funded. How are we going to move forward with this?
We completed the feasibility design. That was, we had submitted that along with the state, and the state asked us to select one priority project. So we did select the Safe Routes to School so we could get that completed. So at this point, we need to have some additional discussions about next steps for that project, and we can do that.
Thank you. On the energy audit, any update on incorporating the additional metrics and getting it back to Maryland?
I have not received it back from Maryland.
Oh, you submitted it to them, though?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Just under the Public Works Report on the flushing, notable is the fact that since our proactive saddle changeout, we have not experienced saddle ferros while flushing, knock on wood. Again, a very proactive protection of our community. Thank you. Jay? Josh, on the headworks, any, I'm sorry, probably, any update on the preliminary deliverable for the work expected approximately July 12th?
Look to the engineers today. They're still awaiting on the analysis from the geotech, no, from the geotech, from the shoring, sheeting and shoring contractor, so then they can go to structural design on the box to house that thing. Once that's complete, we'll get pricing, and we'll see where it goes from there.
Thank you. Just a side question. Josh, are we sending anyone to the Tricon Conference in Ocean City?
I was going to be attending that.
You were?
Yes.
Oh, good. I haven't decided if I'm going on or not. Anyway, that's a side discussion. But thanks for sharing. Beach Elementary School Tennis Court, any update on the MOU, getting that back in?
Yes, I met with the county administrator and the director of Calvert County Parks and Rec on that topic. The county administrator is working it through his channels to understand further the status of the Board of Education. So I will provide that back to the Town Council as soon as we have some more information in coordination with the Board of County Commissioners, Parks and Rec, and Board of Education.
And I'll have some additional comments on Coastal Resiliency when I give my committee report. And last item I have is, on the last page on activities at Kellums, I just wanted to again say congratulations and thank you to everyone involved in expanding all these activities at Kellums. It's really a great idea. It's nice to see that field get much more activity. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I do have a couple of questions left that have not been answered. I could save this for the walkability report. I just want to remind everyone that we've got markers going in the ground. Peggy and I were discussing on the way over here, we're going to go out with it. Apparently, we're going to go out with some kind of spray can and spray paint things. Someone should probably check our work, especially if that happens after happy hour. Strong work on all those things, and I'm very excited to learn more about the sidewalk art because that's one that, for people who don't know, you know, the state pushed back, oh, we don't do that. This is one where we push back, and they've now begun to embrace the possibility of doing that even on state roads. So that's very exciting. Good work, Holly. Okay, a couple of questions. Specifically, do we have a date for the storm drain installation? I know, I'm just kind of curious. Can you actually give us a date when they expect to take a backhoe out there and start digging?
My understanding is the third week in August, and there will not be any youth sports interruptions. We'll be able to work around it.
And the timeframe will be a week?
Yes, one week.
So the Bucks will be able to play?
Yes, no interruptions.
Okay, so moving on to, I want to say one thing about the tennis courts. I just can't emphasize this enough, so stop me if I say something wrong. As we were in good faith, working through an MOU with the Board of Education, we came to learn that they already had an MOU with the county in place.
Calvert County Parks and Rec, yes.
Calvert County Parks and Rec. Number two, the Board of Education closed the tennis courts.
Correct.
So they've now done a slightly better job at actually taking ownership of that because I was walking over there yesterday, and they actually have a sign-up that owns that now. When they first did it, they had not had that sign-up. And in conversations, I had said, well, I don't know who did this, I might just go take it down. But apparently, now they've at least taken ownership of it. So I'll be anxious as we continue to learn more about that. Note on the public boat ramp. So we've ordered the equipment. That is outstanding. Folks just should be reminded that we're going to have access to kayaks and paddle boards. Are you going to have a URL or something so people can get information about that?
Yes, yes. And we'll have, you can register ahead as well for time slots.
Okay, yeah. Maybe that URL will be in the email blast as soon as, perfect, outstanding. Already covered the tennis courts. And so, when do you have a date for the kayaks getting here?
They're supposed to be here on Wednesday of next week.
I will be in the water on Thursday. That is it. A reminder for, which I'll also do in lightning round for Third Friday tomorrow. And it looks like we're going to have some pretty nice weather for that. So thank you, Holly. The Ryan Forster Band, yes, would be there. And if you haven't seen, everybody knows Ryan Forster, but if you've ever heard his band, they played his Stars and Stripes. He tore the place down. I mean, it was great. They had a couple horns there, if I'm not right, you know? And yeah, it was, it was really special. So I look forward to seeing everybody there. Madam?
Yeah, when you go last, most everything's been covered. But I would like to kind of like go back to the kayak launch because you know that the paddle and pathways pickup, which is in September 28th, is kind of relying upon that. And the county's expecting us also to have that, working with Parks and Rec. So is there any risk that the boat launch will not be available? The kayak launch?
DNR is actually providing the spec for that and actually even finding us the vendor. So they're moving along really quickly. There's been some back and forth about whether it'll be on the east side ramp or the west side ramp. They've settled on it being on the east side ramp, so they have itemized it very well. It can provide, I'm going to put an eblast aisle showing exactly what it will look like.
I can provide, I'm going to put an eblast aisle showing exactly what it will look like. And so I would expect that, yes, it would be in place in time for the paddle and pickup.
Okay, just they're depending on it. And if anything's needed in August, without a meeting, we can, you know, do whatever's needed in September, I guess. Probably. Speaking of that, so that is, we're getting a grant for that, right? $10,000? And then we're putting up the $5,000 for it. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, great. And then just to reiterate that the Kellums Field Playground, the tot lot, will be completed by the end of September.
I don't know that it'll be in end of September. They expect it to be in around early fall. So we expect to complete the grading work in September. And then right behind that will come the new equipment.
Okay. Y'all asked about tennis courts and the water park. I'm good.
Very good. Thank you. Treasurer's report, we've read Brittany's report. She's not here. If we have any questions, if the council has any questions, please shoot her an email after the meeting. Town engineer's report, we've read Wayne's report. If I have any questions, I'll begin with Councilwoman Bodine and go around the horn, as they say.
Yeah, one thing I did want to discuss is I understand, where are we with the water park geotech study? And what were the results if they are in?
They started today drilling. They went down to 85 or 90 feet and they, on the first boring, that's as far as they've gotten. They'll be continuing that throughout the rest of the week and then we won't get a report for a few weeks. But generally, they found what we kind of expected they'd find, which kind of mimics what we saw in the pile driving reports from the original water park. And that is that there's not a lot of support in between those piles. So once they finish that work, they'll be doing some pile testing. They'll also be doing some analysis of what they found. Then we'll start working on foundation design between the piles.
Okay, and that would leave us with up to like three options. One is, the way I read the report is that they're suggesting that whatever happens is done basically new from what the report said in the town administration report. Is that accurate?
Yes.
I mean, based on what they saw at the water park when they did their initial review?
Yes. From what we found today, it's exactly what we expected it to be. So not surprised. It's just a matter now of testing the piles, confirming that the conditions they found today are the same throughout the water park. We expect them to be. Then they'll give us a footing design and we'll proceed from there.
And then all the specific options that might be available, whether they be with a lazy river, pools and an activity center without a lazy river, or something a little bit less, should be decidable when?
So Emerald FX, we met with them, was it last week? I think it was last week? To kind of give them the lay of the land and they went over and walked the water park. And they're working on those three concepts now. I would expect, they said they'd have something back to me by the end of the month. That's just to me. That's the initial sketch. I then from there have to put them over top, the foundation areas and create the concept sketch like you've seen before. So I would expect that to be sometime in August.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. No more questions?
Thank you. Actually, Councilwoman Bodine covered all the same questions I would have asked. I might just ask one follow up. So you will become sort of the point person, at least initially, in taking what the geotech folks say and what the foundation says and what the creative people sort of propose and coming up with something that's going to fit in between. Is that, do I understand that right?
You're correct. I'm taking the concept plans and the geotech information and marrying them and trying to figure out how we build this thing.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry if I missed you answering this before, but the design kickoff was to be held last week. Did we get going with it?
It did.
Great.
Yep.
Keep moving. Thank you.
Sir?
Yeah, Wayne, good to see you again, as usual. Enjoyed working with you during these tenures here. You're very professional and knowledgeable. Let's turn the page to the next steps, this next chapter, if you will, of figuring out what can be done there with the water park. Emerald FX is very experienced in these water parks. Can you comment, please, on their impression of their tour of our existing facilities? And how, and I don't know, I wasn't there, but I don't know. Sometimes you ask questions to push some buttons to get a fuller response with things. But, you know, the intention possibly of starting that thing up and running it as is.
As is? We didn't have that conversation, but I certainly wouldn't recommend it. His comments were he's seen a lot of things that day he hadn't seen in 40 years. Some things he's never seen. For example, the pile foundation system we have out there. He said, I can't believe someone spent that kind of money to support a water park. But they did. So thank, it's good for us, right? He said the equipment we have out there is antiquated. The newer equipment that they use nowadays is far more efficient, takes up far less footprint. So he recommended demoing in all the plumbing, all the pumps, all the filters, all that. Because it would take far less, far less room, far less energy. The technology has really advanced. So in essence, he said, I recommend we start scraping the current park and starting over again. But in that, he is still incorporating the building and whatever he can in his concepts.
That makes sense, sure. I'm just curious. We know that we've got a very experienced, highly reputable geotech firm involved here with this testing. But I'm curious, did they discuss how they were going to test the piles and what procedures they were going to go through? Because we know where, all the piles are covered up. Are we going to open up some things or what is their procedure?
Yeah, they're planning on doing blow tests on top of piles to get loads that would be required to make the piles move.
Okay, is there any, and that's necessary. We've got to do that to find out, make sure we know where we're at. Is there any risk to surrounding structures?
No, it's a different, it's a vibratory hammer. It's not like, not a pile driving hammer. It's just a vibratory hammer. And it measures the force on the pile. It's not really destructive at all.
Oh, good. Okay. Awesome. We're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. My questions have been asked and answered, so thank you.
Sure, sure.
Adam?
Thank you. My questions and more have been answered. Thanks.
Okay. Calver County Sheriff's Office, Twin Beach Deputy report. We've read Lieutenant Holliger's report. We have any, any questions? Here he comes. Councilwoman Hartman, if you?
I just have a question, a general question. Have you found, and are you able to detect any effect in the driving and situations from the relaxed marijuana laws?
No, I mean, I haven't really noticed anything, not yet. So, yeah, I guess that's the short answer, no, not yet.
Great. And I wanted to say I'm glad to see the DUI activity. Because if there's one thing that discourages people, it's getting hot. So, very good. Thank you.
Stay on it.
Stay safe.
Yeah, good evening and thank you for your service. I do have a question. I'm not sure if this is going to be a question you can answer. But I was looking at the reports and the overdose rates. And what I noticed, and Larry, you may be able to help out with this a little bit. But the overdose number on the North Beach Volunteer Fire Department report is equal to five. Now, maybe overdoses unrelated opioids and that may be part of the issue. It could also be overdoses outside of the beaches, which I don't think, I think, I'm not sure what the volunteer fire department actually counts when they do it. And I was just curious if you could provide any insight?
Yeah, I can actually, we actually have someone who tracks all the overdoses in Calver County. And I can get you their whole spreadsheet and email it to you. But some of the difference is, we won't put anything on our sheet until we get toxicology reports and the whole thing. There's at least one I can think of, maybe two, that probably are overdoses that we just haven't gotten the results back in on. So I don't think we've had five, but yeah, I will, if you want, I'll forward you.
Yeah, that would be great.
It's up to the minute spreadsheet that we have.
Okay, thank you.
Sir.
Can you, are you willing, are you able to comment on the recent shooting in North Beach? There was a recent shooting a few weeks back.
The, oh, okay, the murder case that we had a few weeks ago? I could, I can tell you, I guess, what's already known out there, or I can meet you after and give you the scoop. What's the question? What do you have?
I was just wondering if we knew what the motive was, if there was something, you know, behind that. We can talk offline on that. It sounds like maybe that's more appropriate. The only other thing I really had was questions Richfield Station, that issue with the speeding, 20-year issue with speeding through Richfield Station. I know I had forwarded some options with Holly that she was going to send to your team. I had discussed with some folks at the last municipal league meeting at the expo. Have we developed any potential options to try to abate that?
Well, I mean, my plan is just to stay on it. I spoke with the HOA president from Richfield Station. He said he's noticed a difference in the slowdown, so we're just going to stay in there and.
Notice and slowdown because you've had some folks and had some cars parked there. And we appreciate everything that you can do there. That is absolutely a temporary fix. We know that the speeding in there has been ongoing. And, and I know the HOA president, Bill, he's a couple of doors down from me. It seems like something physically needs to be done there, that it doesn't include having cars parked to warn people. I'll talk to Bill. I'll talk to, I can talk to Bill on the side. I'm willing to meet with your team and Bill to talk about some options there. But there are a lot of things thrown around. I don't think the community is going to be acceptable of any speed bumps in there. But we, I've pointed out that there's a speed limit sign missing heading out of, heading out of Richfield Station on that right side. So if you can take a look at that, it's something that, there's HOA property there, and I'm sure they'd be very willing to allow a sign to go there. Do you have something you wanted to?
I was just going to mention that we did receive the apparatus that you had sent. And Jay, our Public Works Minister, also has a device that we're looking at. So we're evaluating the two. One of the key things that we want to make sure that the device does is actually take data so that we can see if it's changing behavior and we can track speed. So we are comparing those two and we expect to bring that back to council to review.
Yeah, I know that the apparatus that I had forwarded, it did track all the data and it seemed pretty inexpensive. And it's something that's movable. It doesn't have to be a fixed thing there. And in my mind, all things considered today, I think folks just need a reminder when they're riding. I'm the same way. You know, sometimes we're going faster than we think we are, especially through communities. And a reminder of how fast we are going at a time is about as good as we can do. So I'm certainly following, but I'll definitely follow up with Bill again. And I appreciate everything that everybody's doing there. Those things work.
We'll stay on it. You'll notice on the sheet, we've made a few arrests on Harrison Boulevard, so, and traffic stops. So we'll stay on it.
Okay, thank you.
Sir, my questions have been answered. Thank you for your service and stay safe.
Thank you, Councilman.
Ari, nice to see you again. Just a couple of things. So first of all, on a kind of a lighter note, it's interesting you say you've not really noticed marijuana loosening of the marijuana laws. Well, good way to put it. You know, in counties other than Calver, I would think it could lessen road rage, but I don't think it's really a problem in Calver, so who knows? The apparatus that you're talking about, Councilman, you're talking about a sign that puts up your speed. You are going this, right?
Yes, it's simple. The one that I looked at was solar operated.
We looked at those at MML together. I'm not sure everyone maybe knew that, so I wanted to confirm that that was right. The last thing I have is a little bit more serious and I'm curious about this. So I didn't see it in your report, but the CVS ATM machine was destroyed. I mean, it was, it's hard for me even to get my hands around what happened there. Can you give us any insight on that?
Yeah, some people came in from out of the county and they used the equivalent of the Jaws of Life machine, ripped it apart, fled out of there. We actually caught up with a couple of them on B Street, arrested them there. One of them took off into the woods. We weren't able to catch him at the time, but we know who he is and he's charged. So everyone's been properly charged and we'll see what happens in court. But yeah, we were fortunately able to catch them all. They did at least three other ones up in Anarundel, PG County.
I didn't know that. Wow.
Maybe even more. And they got away with those, but not here. Here, so.
I assume that no one, no employee of CVS was injured?
No.
I mean, are they in and out in a second? How does?
A few minutes, a few minutes.
That's remarkable to me.
Some of them are pros. I mean, they've done this many times. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you for giving me an update on that. Stay safe.
No questions. Thank you.
Bravo though.
That's good.
Hey, safe, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. North Beach Volunteer Fire Department, I don't know if you have anything to add, Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
Just two things for everyone to be aware of. The department is moving ahead with getting the marsh grass out front trimmed again. I've heard from a number of people concerns about the sightlines approaching the department, particularly from the north. So that's going to happen soon, I hope. And just the other, again, the planning is moving forward for celebrating the department's 100th anniversary in 2026. And I'll keep everyone posted on what we got planned for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Next is mayor's report. Won't be as lengthy as last one. First, I just want to thank, you know, the entire town and folks that don't, you know, live in town for their kind, humbling words of appreciation of my time in service. Truly humbling, truly humbling. And I, you know, it really sets me off that I can, you know, hopefully have fun between now and the end of the year and just enjoy, you know, these final few months as your mayor. So I do really thank everybody. Somebody probably hear me, you know, mention every now and then that, you know, my degree is in US history. And I've, I've taken the time often in these mayor reports to share meaningful quotes from famous Americans, be it Vince Lombardi, Willie Mays, Dr. King, or Ben Franklin. It's been fun. And I do plan to continue that for my next three meetings. Feels funny saying that. So tonight, I've got one from our, our second president and founding father, John Quincy Adams. His quote is, "Government is instituted for the common good, for the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people, and not for the profit, honor, or private interests of any one man or class of men." I share this because your six town council members have met and exceeded all of our expectations these past eight years. And their goal is and has always been the protection, safety, prosperity, and happiness of the people of Chesapeake Beach. My concerns, which relate to this quote, relate to the coming election. And apparently my concerns are the same that our founding fathers had. We must root out and boot out any candidate who is running for the profit, honor, or private interest of, as Mr. Adams said, any one man or class of men. So having said that, thank you very much. Moving on. We have a vote on ordinance 0-24-10 in the ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach, Maryland, to amend the language of the election code to quantify how the town validates petitions for referendum. Is there a motion to approve?
Who's approve?
Second?
You discuss this. All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Next, vote on ordinance 0-24-11 in the ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach to amend the language of the election code to clarify how the board of election will offer assistance to voters with disabilities. Is there a motion to approve?
No moves.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? And lastly, for the evening, vote on ordinance 0-24-12. And I'm going to stop right there and just preface everybody with what I plan to do here is when I get a, once we get a motion to approve and a second, I'm going to ask Randy, as our discussion, you know, begins, I'm going to ask Randy and Todd if they have any comments to, you know, add. And then we'll take council discussion at that time. So I'll begin, vote on ordinance 0-24-12 in the ordinance to the town council of Chesapeake Beach to add language to the election code to establish campaign financing regulations. Is there a motion to approve? Okay, I'll begin discussion. Is Randy here?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, just give me one second. Yes, just give me one second, Randy. I had forgot to say, I, I wanted to mention that, you know, we, this is the first, this is the first administration that's ever had an ethics board in the history of Chesapeake Beach. And it looks like this same group will have an opportunity to be the first to establish such campaign financing regulations, which we all agree are necessary. Randy?
Okay, so, so just a couple of comments, and, you know, our, our elections currently encourage any voter or the average registered voter to run for office. Is it our town, is it in our town's best interest to allow money resources to drive our elections? The average candidate would not be able to compete without a resource sponsor. So, so I'll, I'll say that. And then the other thing I want to say is that in, in the early 90s, I think it was like 1992, somewhere around there, the, the, our code was modified to change that non, non-resident property owners, so only, only resident property, only residents could vote. And it took away the vote, they used to have it prior to 92, where property owners could, could actually vote in the election. That was taken away 1992. And, and so that tells me as the election guy, and when I'm drafting things, that the election is for registered voters, not, not for other non-resident property owners, business owners that aren't residents. It, it's for resident registered voters. And, 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 and I have, during my tenure in the, in the board, I have driven toward, for example, in 2013, when I came on board for that special election, there was a lot of issues with the referendum. There was nothing in the code to really tell Malcolm Fawn and, and Ron Draper, and I don't remember the other Board of Elections member, how to really run that. And, and so when I took over, when they all resigned, and I took over in 2013, I had to figure it out. Well, after that, I wrote a lot of code to, to basically make sure and code so that, so that the Board of Elections knew how to run and deal with a referendum, or run a special election and how to deal with the referendum. One of the things I added in there was that the petitions that are required for a referendum are, have, have, have to be registered voter signatures. But there was nothing in there that said, it said that the person gathering the signatures onto the piece of paper that was being used to count the number of registered voters that were signing the petition, it says that he is supposed to be, be swearing to that those are registered voters. Well, if that person is not a registered voter, how do I know who he is? Or, no, so, so we've modified the code to say that only registered voters could gather signatures for a referendum. So that's another precedent. 1992, we did a precedent that elections were basically for registered voters. And in 2019, I think when we passed this referendum thing, we did it again. So I'm kind of the one that stuck with that, and I kind of inserted that thing about registered voters. You could only accept gifts from registered voters. That's where that came from. I don't really have anything else to say now, but I will answer questions as, as the town councilmen's ask.
If, if they do, yes. Thank you, Randy. And is there anything that you want to add to it, Todd?
No, I've just had a number of different meetings with Mr. Getman to discuss various drafts of this ordinance. And I know that the council has reviewed it. So, you know, it has been reviewed and vetted a number of different times to come up with this draft here.
Okay, very good. And before I take comments from Councilwoman Hartman, I'm going to, I'm going to make some of my own since I'm a senior member at the diocese here. I can tell you, in my seven elections, I've never accepted a penny from anybody. And that's the way that I want it, never wanted to be beholden to anybody, because that's what happens when you, when you take money. I can even remember having to give back a hundred dollar check from one of the sweetest senior citizens that we have in town because I held to my principle. Secondly, you know, my first election in, in 1996, in the entire town, we had one sign. Jo Finch had one sign. I remember she put it in front of town hall that day. I remember the election after that, we, the only signs that we had then, I think two, two members of council bonded and formed a team, and they had signs around, and that seemed to be the beginning of signs. The next one after that, which would have been 2004, there was, there was a pretty heated mayor's race. And one, one person actually had a bus. There was a bus out there with a sign as big as a bus, just sitting right over there. They, there were, it, you know, for most of us, we thought it was obnoxious. And, and it just, and from that point on, it just spiraled into, I mean, signs, nobody really liked signs, but they do go away after X amount of days, to, you know, you know, mailers and all these things. And I've, I've definitely, you know, participated in that when I ran for mayor because I, I had to, I knew the opponent was. But we, you know, we've lost this small-town feel, this, this, this whole thing that we talked about in, in the work session, which was basically getting back to, you know, the gal next door, the guy next door that says, you know, I want to run for town council, maybe I'll make top six, I'm going to give it a shot. And, you know, maybe they've got a couple hundred bucks for, you know, 20 signs, or, God, I can remember this, the handmade signs that Calver County used to have for their Board of Elections. You know, they were handmade, and they used to use them four years later if they lost, they would use it again, you know? And, and, you know, I think Linda Kelly was famous for using her signs like, you know, 20 years, you know? And we, we've lost all of that. So what we were striving for in the, you know, work session is to go back to just, what if the guy next door, he doesn't plan to accept $500, $1,000? He, as was mentioned, you know, mailers are just getting more expensive and expensive. Well, who can, who can afford that unless you're accepting a lot of donations from somebody? You know, what, what happens to the, the average person next door who just wants to, to run? It goes away. And that was our, you know, and we, you know, I think a few members of, of council at the, the work session, you know, you know, mentioned the unusual nature of our town. You know, this is not a small town where, you know, somebody that owns the ice cream shop, you know, wants to give, you know, me $50 or whatever because they, you know, like me. It isn't that, you know, you know, for, not judging this, but as we all know, you know, billions, and that is billions with a B, billions of dollars in gaming revenue has passed through this town since I've been here. That is billions. That's a lot of money. And whenever you start, you know, and we're, you know, that's why we're so different than all these other, other towns. You know, there isn't any other one. When you start to understand that, you start to realize that the, the lady next door cannot compete with somebody else who is a friend of somebody that, you know, happens to be in this billion-dollar revenue business. And, you know, we're writing checks for $500 or whatever it is, is, you know, nothing. You know, it's, it's nothing at all. I, I mean, let's just look at the last phrase that, you know, David Trump. I mean, he came down here to Calver County, he, he gave every candidate a thousand bucks. He just, he's throwing it around, you know? He, he didn't care. And, and, you know, so we are, we really want to avoid that, and we really understand that we're different than every other town. So in, in order for us to keep this the small town that we talk about, and we have talked about for eight years, you know, this is very important moving forward for us to, you know, go forth with what we've been saying. So that's, that's my comment on that.
Thank you. Having heard a number of the comments this evening, and thank you for those people who gave it, I was concerned a little bit about the quotations from how much money state people get as opposed to how much money people running for positions in this little town get. I mean, it is a different scale to do a state election than to do a HSPB election, or at least it should be, because we're not that big. As far as every property owner voting in the town, I can understand why you have property here and investment here. You want to have a say in it, but it is different when you live here, and you're here every day, and you have to pay all the expenses of living here than when you've invested in here and you're renting your property to get money back from it. It is a different, it's a different experience to live here, and there are different expenses and different risks that are taken. So it is, it's a hard question whether everybody who owns a piece of property should get to vote in two different elections, where they live and where they are registered, and where they happen to have investment property. They could vote in 17 elections if they have investment property in 17 places. It's a, an interesting concept. Thank you.
Thank you. Sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate your comments. I do have one question. I just want to verify. We've heard, I heard several comments tonight questioning the legality. I just want to be sure that our, our lawyer has reviewed it and can assure us that it is in order.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Then I support it.
Thank you. Mr. Morris?
Well, I can assure everybody in this room that it's coming from a good place. The timing of it on the surface certainly looks suspect. All things considered today, I'll, all things considered today, I'm, I'm in favor of amending the sections that, any of the sections that have been presented this evening. But we know that this is needed, especially in this town today, in today's environment. How much money do we need to run for office in a small town? $1,000? $10,000? Is $25,000 enough? And to some of the opinions mentioned up on the diocese this evening, just the thought that there, that that is possible in this town suppresses the average folks from trying to get involved at all. And we need, this town thrives on its volunteers. And if we aren't careful, we need campaign finance, there's no question about it. But if we aren't careful about how that is crafted and executed, this town is going to lose its grassroots volunteers that feed into these councils. All of my campaigns have been 100% funded by me. That is small town. When you, if you see a sign of mine out there, it will say, "Paid for by Greg Morris." That's small town. I can afford to run for a small office in a small town, but with so many millions of dollars running through these casinos, and I'm calling them their casinos, every year, that is black money. I have always looked at it as a black hole for money. I'm in support of those businesses that are here, and it, it doesn't offend me that we have gambling here in town. But that is the gravity of what we're talking about today. Small-town candidates need simple, straightforward language. We need to, and we must provide small-town candidates for mayor and for council, and small-town, small-town campaign finance rules that are, that are in, in play. So I'm inclined to, to not vote in favor in any capacity of this ordinance this evening. However, I would encourage this body to act on it and maybe get it in place after this election so that the next, the next group of folks that are leading this town can fine tune that and tailor to the needs that this town needs today. Thank you.
Sir?
Here's some of the same concerns as Councilman Morris, and I've voiced these in the past, that my concern is with increasing requirements like this ordinance on campaign finance reporting and the other requirements we now have in place on ethics reporting annually, I'm concerned that there will be a number of people that might have been interested in running for an office that will say, you know what? I'm just not going to put up with that stuff. I don't know that I would have eight years ago if all this stuff was in place, and I realized what I was going to have to do if I was elected or even running for office, nonetheless elected. One of the concerns that I have is, again, from an economic development point of view, as I always speak, what I've heard so often over the eight years I've held this seat from our local businesses is that they are concerned that they don't really have a voice in what goes on here at the council. And our town's economy is based on the economy of our local businesses. So it, it just concerns me that they feel they don't have a voice to articulate, and I'll just stop there for now.
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to be brief because there's kind of an echo, I think, going on, but I do want to make a couple of points on my own behalf. Number one, I, I did not and will not take external funds in any campaign I, I ran or may run in the future. And, and I echo, I can't echo strongly enough, you just shouldn't need a ton of money to run for a seat in this town. You know, if, if I get a mailer from any candidate, and I, and I actually see it, because I really only check my mail, I won't say how often I check my mail, it's not very often, I will not vote for that candidate. So I'd recommend not sending me a mailer. There are plenty of other ways to get, to get your voice out. You know, I'm going to, well, I'll, I'll stop there on that. Having said that, I echo what Councilman Jaworski said, that businesses should have some voice. They're, they contribute to our economy. And I would support contributions being made by a business incorporated in town with the same spending limit to any individual candidate as an individual. It's not a huge impact. It doesn't touch on the billions of dollars available. It simply gives a business the opportunity to put something behind a given candidate. And I think our limit in this ordinance is, is $500. So it's not a ton of money, but a business can have the same voice that a single individual citizen has. That doesn't seem unreasonable to me. Still keeps things in a small-town scale. I'll stop there, but I would support that language change in the, in the ordinance. Thank you.
Madam?
I know it's been asked once before, but I want to reiterate it and just confirm, is there anything unlawful in this ordinance?
No.
No? Okay. I just wanted to make sure I was clear, you know, say it again. If you go to, if we're worried about those individuals that want to run and volunteerism in section A, no, excuse me, make sure I get this right, B3, it says if a candidate does not accept any camp, campaign contributions and only uses their own personal funds, then this candidate does not have to file a campaign finance report. So there's no issue with an individual who doesn't accept any contributions. I, for myself, like myself, I've run for five elections, been elected five times, and I've yet to accept a penny from anyone else, because I also do not want to be beholden to anyone or anything. And so I think, I'm not frightened about scaring away people, because if you don't accept anything, you don't have anything to report, and everything's good. And I'll leave it with this, I think the ordinance helps to limit outside influences on our town elections and as we try to struggle and maintain our small-town charm and our small-town feel. And so those are my opinions. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to introduce a proposed amendment.
Okay, we, we have a, we have a motion to approve, we have a second, now we have an amendment?
Yes.
Would you kindly share that, sir?
Yes, sir. Proposed amendment to 22-28-2, item B1. I would like to propose the introduction of the following wording. The first sentence reads, "Candidates will only accept contributions from town of Chesapeake Beach registered individual voters." I propose to change that to, "Candidates will only accept contributions from the town of Chesapeake Beach registered individual voters and owners of businesses located within the corporate limits of the town of Chesapeake Beach."
We have an amendment? Is there a second? For, for lack of a second, the amendment dies.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like-
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to propose an amendment.
Okay.
If I may do that.
Okay, that amendment dies. We have a new one now.
Okay. I would like to propose an amendment in two parts.
Okay.
First part would echo exactly what Councilman Jaworski says. Is that appropriate to?
Yes, it is. Yes, we understand.
And the second part would be under B2, candidate will not accept total contributions in excess of $500 from any single person. I would amend that to read candidate will not accept total contributions in excess of $500 from any single person or entity as defined in section B1.
I'll second that.
We have an amendment and we have a second. I'll begin discussion with Councilwoman Hartman.
I'm very much torn between the idea of business being represented, which I understand, and I think with Councilman Morris's comment about being beholden to somebody who's giving you money so that you respond to them. Is that representing a business? Or is it representing what you've been given? And that is my comment on that.
And thank you. Keith, if you don't mind, I think, I think Todd was just to share some information.
I do, I do have, with regard to the amendment, I do have a concern with the term owners. Because in essence, if indeed is a corporation that is involved, the owner becomes a shareholder. And we don't know how many shareholders there may be with regard to the owner. So if you're going to do it, take out the word owner and make it the business themselves. So indeed, if you're looking to have the corporate interest, then that's fine. You know, if you say it's the corporation who would make the donation and then the limit of $500. I obviously am not making any recommendations, I'm just trying to clarify the language. But, you know, indeed, some corporations, you know, may have 15, 20, even small corporations, a mom and pops may have 15 different owners of it. Larger corporations, you know, may have many, many different owners. So I was just looking for, take out the word owners and just would, you know, the corporate entity or something like that.
Mr. Fink, if you will accept that friendly amendment to your amendment, we will continue our discussion.
Absolutely.
Okay, very good. So we're back to you, sir.
Thank you. Well, well, I definitely appreciate the amendment. I do still have a hard time moving in that direction. I think we should be very focused on the residents and who they live. I have nothing against businesses. I have seen how, in my opinion, businesses have had too large of a voice in this town and I've seen what we get. In fact, I look at it every day when I leave my house to go to work. So I don't think businesses have not been, had a say. I think we are balancing it back to where it should be, where residents and businesses are more equal and not businesses are dictating what happens in the town. So I'm still supportive of the original ordinance. Thank you.
I'm supportive of the amendment. Thank you.
Okay. I guess I sort of just, I'm going to make a comment as we go around. Thank you. Yeah, I guess just as we follow politics, state politics, these everywhere, when you, you know, when you accept a donation, you are beholden to that person and you will get the call, you know, trust me. You will get the call. I mean, it may be something really innocent, like I want to move my deck two feet that way and not two feet that way. You might, it might be this, it may be that, but you will get the call. And, you know, I have in the past heard a business owner in this town, you know, basically tell a official, I'll use a different title, but the word was basically, it went this way, you are my delegate now, you know, I gave you money, you know. And I remember thinking, I went up to that person, I thought, how much was that? He said $500. And I was like, you think you're going to own me for $500? I don't think so, you know. So I do think when you accept money, which apparently nobody at this table ever has, you're going down a road that you really don't need to go down. So I, I am not in favor of this amendment. Sir?
Nothing further.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify, I am not going to accept money from an individual or business. Anyone who does, if I understand it correctly, once this, once some form of this amendment passes, will need to disclose that to the public. So the public will know if someone accepted money from their neighbor or from a local business. So just wanted to make that point, not in support or opposed to the amendment, but just so people understand, you know, how it, how I see it and it plays. So enough said for me. Thank you.
Very good. Councilwoman?
I think I, in contemplating this, I understand the amendment. And I think I will go with what Keith said. I think he explained it really well. This is my concern, is that as you go on the Calvert County GIS and you look at the parcels and you see who's the owner, owners of different things, you could have an entity in town that also has a number of LLCs underneath it. So how many times do they get to provide a contribution? And so much like what I think Todd said about shareholders and just where does it end? I think it opens a can of worms. So I am most comfortable with how it currently is written without the amendments. And if we can work on the language perhaps in the next year for the next election, four years from now, perhaps something could be, could happen. But I, I just look at, as you look at the trees of these entities and what they own and what their corporation names are and what their LLCs are, I have concerns about undue influence. And I'll leave it at that. So I'm not going to be supportive of this in any way.
That's fine. Thank you. We have an amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It's a tie. I vote no. Okay. So now we have, back to square one, we have, you know, what's, what's beautiful about, you know, this group here is we all understand that if your amendment doesn't fail, though, it just doesn't, it didn't make it and we still move forward. We, so we have an original, a motion to approve and a second on the original ordinance. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
It passes 4 to 2. Okay, very good. Good, Council. It's a historic moment and I, I'm sure the citizens are very, very happy. Okay, now we're going to go to planning and zoning. No report? I'll wait till it lights down a bit. Thing is, no report. Word of Appeals, a continuation hearing on case 2023-03 Rod and Reel Incorporated Donovan State LLC was held on June 18th. That continuation hearing is scheduled for August 19th at 6:30 PM. We did not get a report from Seabox, but I don't know, Sue just sent out an email. Do you remember what that was? You can find...
National Oyster Week.
Okay, so there's, yeah, and, yeah, and God, I know, that's why I was afraid to say it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Sue does a great job.
National Oyster Week is back August 5th to 11th. That's what her email was.
Wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Larry. Climate Change Advisory Group?
Thank you.
Say what you, sir?
As discussed in the Town Administrator Report, our town is moving forward with implementing the coastal resiliency plan. As part of that effort, our town is continuing discussions with the Maryland Department of the Environment and plans to meet with M.D. staff soon. Discussions also continue with the University of Maryland Partnership for Action Learning, PALS, to consider possible remediation and flood protection measures for the Marsh area between Horizons on the Bay and Seagate communities. In addition, our town continues to work with firm of Mahan-Richell Associates regarding possibly hiring their firm to assist with investigating various coastal resiliency plans around our town. Continue to coordinate with our Coastal Resiliency Steering Committee Chair Jeff Foltz to schedule the next meeting of the Steering Committee, which I believe is going to happen pretty soon. Co-Chair Keith, anything to add?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Not a question.
Yes.
Thank you, Larry. Has there been a first recommendation for the first resiliency project from that group, from the Steering Committee? I know, I've been watching some of the meetings and I, I think the meetings have been very well handled by Mr. Foltz. But you want to confirm, though, that there has not been an initial recommendation of resiliency measures?
Not a particular project, but one item that was identified is the floodgate. And so working with the state to make sure that we have a plan for that as the conditions have changed.
That's also part of that PALS project that I mentioned. They're looking at measures to go into that marsh area, which I, I call Stint at Marsh. It's, I know that's not its official name, but that's what I call it.
And that's what it is. It's right next year. It's right by your highway, so it's your call.
My walkway, yeah.
Okay, stay right there. EDC?
Economic Development. County Economic Development Advisory Commission met on July 10th. Commission discussed proposed updates to the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan and other economic development projects across our county. Next meeting is scheduled for September 11th. The County Tourism Roundtable met yesterday and discussed ongoing activities to promote tourism in the Twin Beaches and across our county. The next meeting of the committee planning events for our nation's 250th anniversary in 2026 is scheduled for next Wednesday. And a very recent update, the feasibility study for a possible bay passenger ferry is moving forward. A draft report is scheduled to be released in August. So stay tuned on that. Finally, planning is moving along for our town's annual Taste of the Beaches event scheduled for Saturday, September 21. Event will be held at Bia, Coastal Italian Kitchen and Wine Bar. I will see you there and I will be taking roll. So make sure you come. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Amen. Please. Yeah, thank you. I just, economic development, had some initial discussions about looking at the Bucks Games as being a community event. We've got a lot of people that come into town during those games and emphasizing not just the importance of setting the table for youth sports organizations here in the Twin Beach area, but as a driver for economic development. Those folks come and they go to businesses here. And game days are fun and they're exciting. And, you know, I would like to continue investigating how we can expand that, that feeling. So people come out and grab some hot dogs and enjoy a football game and cheer on the, you know, their hometown team. Thanks.
Okay. I want to just add one thing. I commented earlier on the event tomorrow night, you know, I forced a ban and I said, if you'd like to, actually, what I want to say is, anybody out there who likes the saxophone, please go, because you're going to hear some sax tomorrow night. So that's it there. Obviously, I like the saxophone. You know, green team, madam?
Yeah, I want to go over a few things, especially since we're not meeting next month. One is, as Larry said, Taste of the Beaches, the green team will be there, Representative Jay. I wanted to discuss the fact that the National Bird Migration Day is September 21st and the Twin Beach Library down there is having quite an event that day. So you might want to check it out. Big one, and you heard me mention it earlier in the meeting, is Pedal and Pathway Pickup. This is our litter pickup where we go around throughout the creek with kayaks, canoes and have a boat. And we get as much litter from the sides of the creek as we can. So I just wanted to reiterate that. And we look forward to participating once again and coordinating with the county on this event. So it's really quite good. Other than that, I wanted to mention that we are, I believe, in the, where we're in the process of getting some Tree City USA signs. Is that accurate? Have we?
Correct.
Great. So often when you drive around some of these towns, you'll notice that they have these signs that say Tree City. And so we will soon have those signs here in the town of Chesapeake Beach. And that's a wonderful thing. Other than that, there was one other thing. I'll coordinate with you, Holly, if I may, regarding a banner for the Pedal and Pathway Pickup to ensure that we can advertise it. But our, our goal is really to, it's just increasing. We also have the Boy Scouts participating once again. So other than that, I want to mention that our next meeting is June 27th, Thursday, 6:30 at, July, I'm sorry. Let me say this one more time. I wrote it down. Thursday, July 25th at the library. And so we look forward to having a lot of volunteers there. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Kelman's Revitalization Committee, Vice President Fink?
Two quick notes. One is, can't wait for the storm pipe to go in, the grain pipe to go in. But the other thing is, just echoing again, third Fridays, it's a really nice opportunity to get out, use the facility, see all the things that are, that are out and available, food trucks, cocktails and...
If I can just paddle on the back over there, I do believe that the third Friday event was a, one of your brainstorms there, Mr. Vice President?
It was a team effort, but...
Somebody has to start it, right? Yeah. Okay, very good. Twin Beach Opioid Abuse Awareness Coalition, Councilman?
All right, thank you. So we had no meeting this month and our next meeting is the second Thursday of August over at the Northeast Community Center at 6 o'clock. Public's welcome to join. And the next big event that we have coming up well prior to that, I am meeting with the Twin Beach Players next week to discuss collaborative opportunities between our group and theirs, hoping to maybe put something together again, similar to the dinner and a show that we did, or COVID. So that, and that was really well received. The kids did a great job. The opioid team did a great job pulling that off. We had 100 people, over 100 people come to that and it was really exciting to see the kids' participation in that. But right now, we're really planning, focusing on the Glow Vigil August 31st, International Overdose Awareness Day. And that'll be held over in the Mark, our Fraser Sunrise Garden in North Beach, August 31st, 7:30 to 9:00 PM. And we're going to have, the theme is Together We Can. And I think we certainly have been trying and doing a lot over the last eight years. And in some ways, this is a culmination of a lot of those efforts. We'll be unveiling our sculpture that was financed by the Maryland, excuse me, Maryland State Arts Council. And then the artist is Thomas Sterner and his sculptures are Big Hug and Hug Chair. And those will be unveiled that evening. And there'll be a series of speakers, inspirational speakers and others. And, and of course, our local resource providers. This year, there's going to be Alcoholics Anonymous, CASA, Calvert County Health Department, providing Narcan training. The Calvert County Local Behavioral Health Authority will be there, Celebrate Recovery. It's a manual church, Celebrate Recovery. And of course, Narcotics Anonymous will be there as well. Hope to see you then.
What was the, I'm sorry, what was the date?
That was August 31st.
Thank you. Okay. We have no unfinished or new business. At this time, is there any public comment? Hearing none, we'll go to the Council Lightning Round and I will begin with Councilwoman Bodine.
Hi, I won't take but a few minutes. I just wanted to say that this evening with Sharon, I put in my candidacy for mayor.
Yeah. Could you repeat that? I can clap, too.
I put in my candidacy for mayor this evening with Sharon.
I said that.
Moving here in 1997, after receiving a doctorate in geography, I've had the pleasure, the joy and the honor of serving on town council for 20 years. We've raised our daughter here and I understand there's been many accomplishments and many challenges that have occurred in those past 20 years, but it has been wonderful. So looking at that 20 years and then looking at the opportunity to run for mayor, I decided that this was a good path for me to take. And there's a few things that I wanted to share with you. First, when we were listening to the sheriff today, we heard about the CVS ATM that was asked by Charlie. I will ensure that we live in a safe and secure town. We will do everything in our possibility to ensure that we can limit the number of break-ins to cars, break-in to homes and have personal and property safety. I can't think of anything more important than safety. Next?
and property safety. I can't think of anything more important than safety. Next, as shown by our ordinance that was just passed, this is what I believe. I believe we need to protect our town against the destructive forces of not only sea level rise, I am the chair of the Green Team, but we also need to protect our town against the destructive forces of developers and things like short-term rentals that may want to try to change or destroy our neighborhoods and our marina environment. And so I want to protect our town and keep it livable and quality, you know, maintain our quality of life. And finally, I think one of the biggest issues in this campaign will be the water park. And this is what I will propose is that, you know, we'll, we're going through the process now. I don't see a major change. I think we need to strictly monitor the budget that allows us to rebuild our town aquatic facility while at the same time developing more park amenities. One can think of the house right next here that was purchased by the town and this council and this mayor and this administration. And we need to upgrade our streetscape. So I will not accept a penny from anyone as I run for mayor. I assure you. And over the next three months, what I do hope to do is go door to door to mostly listen to your concerns. And then I will be able to add to the list above that I just started to enumerate, which is safety, destructive forces, whether they be in man-made or environmental, and our budget for our water park. And I just want to thank you for the opportunity and I'm sorry it took so much time. I look forward to serving.
Thank you and congratulations. Councilman?
I, you know, I, I don't know what the coming months will hold in terms of candidates and other people who may come forward, but it would be an honor to serve with Mayor Bodine should that come to pass. And I certainly wish you all the best in that effort. Other than that, I just want to remind people to get out and use Kellum's Field. It is open every day. There's, there's Frisbee Golf, there's Cornhole, there's all sorts of activities. I know it's been hot as heck. We're going to have a little bit of a break here over the, over the next couple of days. So particularly for Third Friday, it should be pretty nice weather. I, I just want to wrap up with one more shout out to the sheriff. I, I noticed your compatriot has left. But I mean, you have this kind of benefit of a geographic advantage because the only way in and out of the county is Route 4. But it, it is just remarkable to me when you look at statistics in other counties as compared to Calvert. And you've got people who are, who are professionals at knocking off ATM machines, which I wish I would never even have to issue that statement or utter that statement. And where do we stop them? We stop them in Calvert County. Thank you all for your service. Thank you.
Sure. As you've heard several times tonight, I look forward to seeing everyone tomorrow at the town's Summer Night Festival at Kellum's, 6 to 9. Ryan Forstall will provide the music. And since council typically does not meet in August, I will just once again remind everyone, Taste of the Beaches will be Saturday, September 21st, which is only two days after the September council meeting. So just wanted to get the reminder out there. Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to address some comments that were made early in the meeting regarding financing the water park. Everything that I know, all things considered today, there's been a ton of work going in behind to where we are today. Financing the water park is almost a secondary matter for me. The financial, the finances of this town are solid. We have the, we have flexibility to finance the water park in many different ways. I don't have any, I don't have concerns about it being financed. That's going to happen. We, as far as order of magnitude and how much we should, we should budget or, and I think that it should be incumbent on this council to provide the framework of the funding, which we will be able to do when we get this, this data here in the next couple of months. But again, I want to underscore that it's been the, and I was going to ask actually Brittany tonight to comment on a little bit, but she's not here. Financial responsibility that's been delivered by this body and this administration has been outstanding, holds to the highest level of ethics and it's fully transparent. And having that flexibility makes the financing of it easier. Should our costs for what the residents want in this town be north of $5 million, we can handle that. And there's flexibility to make that happen. Main comment that I wanted to make tonight at the, at this, this moment, so I have an announcement. With the help from a very wide support base, my family, trusted colleagues, past and present, friends, old and new, but maybe most importantly, through my own experienced and tempered vision of what we can be, I've made a very difficult decision. This past July 11th, I declared my candidacy for mayor of the great and historic town of Chesapeake Beach. As I like to plan with the end in mind, I see myself as mayor of this town. I see myself filling those shoes. This isn't just a passing fancy, maybe I'd like to be mayor. You can't go in, you can maybe go into council like that, but you cannot go into a mayor race where you may win with the idea and the notion, you fancy the notion of filling those shoes. I see myself bringing people together through words and actions. I see myself allaying the fears of our residents and town staff. If the world or Mother Nature comes down hard on us, I will be there standing tall. On the horizon, I can see the next young town council. Today faceless, tomorrow eager to help lead this town through the next four years with the refreshed energy, vigor and perspectives. They require a council president, a mayor, eager, I'm sorry, lost my place here. They require a council president, a mayor that can pull their varying opinions together and move issues forward effectively. A mayor that is committed to the things that our families want and need from their town, which is a continuation of this body's work. A mayor that is committed to engaging, advancing, collaborating, building, and as needed, pairing this town forward. A mayor who is for the people and by the people. I respect this institution and I am eager to get work. Thank you. Get to work.
Does that mean you're running for mayor?
I declared my candidacy last week and I am running for mayor, sir.
Thank you. Okay.
Don't wait. I'm not going to be there.
Please.
Choose enough. Freeze it out. No, this is great news. I, I, I think the town would be in good hands with, with either of these candidates. So I really appreciate you both throwing your hats in the ring. So that's wonderful. I will make an announcement and that is I will not be running for council this next round. It's been a great pleasure serving the town. I've learned so much and I think we, I'm very proud of everything the council has done and the administration has done over the last eight years. And I'm sure I will miss it after I've been gone for a while. But, but yeah, I think, I think, you know, the town has a lot of challenges, but I think it's in a much better place than it was eight years ago. And so it's been a real pleasure serving with you all. And we'll get to do three more of these together. So I'm looking forward to that. So.
You? Well, thank you, Keith.
Yeah.
And I look forward to Third Friday Happy Hours.
All right. Thanks.
And, and if I will, you know, Keith is, he's been the voice of reason on this board. He's been the voice of reason. He, he's, when some of us have struggled over this way, that way, you know, there's been times that we just looked over and said, I'm not quite sure. Let's see what Keith thinks about this, you know? And you, you've helped us all, Keith. And by helping us, you've helped the town. So your, your time is well spent. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, Keith, I am not running for mayor. And I am thrilled that for mayor office so far anyway, we have three candidates of citizens who are willing to step up and take time to fill the role, which is a lot of time and covers a lot of grounds. And I look forward to seeing how our candidates, all of y'all, come together on this. And with that also, I would like to say congratulations to Mayor Mahoney for being inducted to the Maryland Municipal League Hall of Fame for service.
Yeah. If you don't mind me interrupt, my kid brother called and he said, don't get a big head, Pat. It's not Cooperstown. So, please.
I do want to say thank you, Pat, for your tireless effort to keep our town, for the citizens of the town. And we will miss hearing from you on the dais.
Thank you. I very much. And I, I have a, have a lightning round as well. And.
Then I'll finish.
Did you finish?
No.
Well, you gave me that smile. That usually means I'm done.
Your special smile of congratulations.
Oh, that was for me. The council hasn't got their smile yet. Okay. All right. Please.
See y'all tomorrow night. Thank you.
Very good. Yeah. Okay. So, you know, there's always a lot of misinformation on social media about this, that, there. So I want to make it very clear to everybody where I stand on this coming election and who, who I support and who I definitely don't. There's an old saying in baseball that says you can never have enough good pitching. And tonight we've learned that two seasoned leaders on the town council are running for mayor to continue to improve what we have accomplished these past eight years. Valerie has served on town council for, for, for 20 years, four years as vice president, sort of the same spot I was at eight years ago. She has served as acting mayor, sat in this seat, ran meetings, and is a fierce advocate for small town values. She's been knocked down many times, but she always gets back up and keeps on fighting. She, I think it's fair to say that she's probably the most prepared and does her homework, in my opinion, more than anybody that I've served with on this dais for, for 28 years, even if I didn't agree with her, which is, has, has happened a lot. At least she had the facts to, to back what she was, you know, saying. And, and I could tell that she, she did her homework. So thank you. And congratulations. Greg Morris has been on town council for eight years and also served before that as the HOA president at Richfield Station, which some of us may say is a tougher job than being on town council. Children, all children, playing at Kellum's Field is his passion. In fact, I believe one of the first times I had a conversation with Greg was on the sidelines at Kellum's Field during a, a Bucks game. One of your boys was playing and I used to like to go because I would coach soccer on Saturdays and I could go over there and I wasn't Coach Pat. It was really kind of cool just to hang out. So we, we, we got to know each other and talked a lot about Kellum's Field at that time. I remember eight years ago, at my kitchen table, watching college football with Councilman Fabre, Greg expressed his frustration that then Mayor Wall consistently put Richfield Station issues on the back burner. And he was running for office to do something about it. He accomplished just that. Congratulations, sir. I appreciate that, you know. I, I've also seen on, on social media that, and here in attendance, Bruce Wall is holding fundraisers at each of the three gaming parlors in town. They have good food for the record. 36 years ago, in 1988, Bruce Wall was appointed by Mayor Gerald Donovan to the town council. Bruce was loyal to, to that administration for his entire time in office. While this council and I have supported the will of the people and successfully opposed any expansion of slot machines in town and support an increase in revenue from that. When in office, Bruce was the opposite. He, he, he supported gaming and he vehemently opposed increasing the gaming revenue tax, which would bring more revenue and services to our citizens. So just to be clear, because I read something adverse once on social media, to be clear to the world, you will not see a Bruce Wall sign in my front yard. This, this is not the same town it was in 1988. Probably, you know, close to, a, a large percentage of our registered voters weren't even born in 1988. Our citizens expect more and deserve better. County council members Valerie Bodine and Greg Morris are the two councils, are the two candidates that I will be looking at to throw my support behind. As I used to say in Catholic school, amen. That's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? I don't want to be saying that three more times.